I think the home has a.
I'd like to bring. This meeting of the Mayor County Council on Tuesday, August twelfth, one point five, Mr. County Government Center. Or Brim. Brim number one, one, zero, two. If we take a look. At our agenda, the first thing is we need to stand for the pledge and moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic, holy stands. Nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all. Who's remain standing for a moment of silence? You may be seated. Okay, take a look at your agenda. And your packet for this evening, we have as number three, the citizen spotlight. And I would just like to talk to you for a minute, everybody, about citizen spotlights. This is a recognition. Of citizens in our community, we have so many people. In our community that do so many great things for our town. And we would like to, I would like to recognize those people. At meetings and. Next in September, we will have the Skills USA. Students who won at the local, state and national, we had a national winner this year from the Technical High School. And we are so very proud of them, but I would encourage you, we have an online. Citizen Spotlight application. And you can pick it up also at Town Hall, you can nominate anybody you see, if you see someone doing something outstanding and you say, hey. They need to be recognized, please let me, let us know, okay? All right, thank you. All right, number four, presentation, Simple Fiber are going to describe their project to bring fiber optic technology to Snow Hill. Beginning with the downtown area and Mr. Pollitt, would you like to introduce?
Just came in.
Okay, good.
So, yes, this is an exciting project that's been well into making of bringing fiber optic technology to Snow Hill. We have a project that's about to start if it's not thought, in fact, I think they have already started with a little bit of groundwork preparation. So we've asked the team to join us tonight, just to kind of explain to the public what's going on when you see folks out on the sidewalk. Drilling holes and getting ready to bury cable, they're, you know, what it's all about, you know, what the benefit of the snow hill is, and also hopefully get a. Kind of a rough timeline of what to expect from this point until the time when the surface is fully available. We did include in the packet with the agenda tonight, some frequently asked questions and a rough overview of what the project's about, but. Love to have a presentation now, just to kind of bring everybody up to speed on where we are. Okay, introduce yourself.
You want to explain? Are you. Way to face, but. I'm the Director of Operations at Simple Fiber. And yeah, we're excited to, I'm excited to be here tonight and we're excited to be commencing work here in Snow Hill. You know, this is part of a larger partnership with the county where we've already rolled out service in Pocahontas. And we're moving to Snow Hill next and on that will be rolling out service in Berlin as well. So as Rick alluded to. There's a lot of work that goes into it, retrofitting infrastructure throughout the city. So we have a combination of, you know, in-house teams and subcontractors really requires. An incredibly diverse skill set. You know, because you have. You know, instruction side, which is normally where I fall, like more traditional construction in the sense of getting out there. You know, surveying, identifying utilities and then using. Usually our directional drill equipment, which is. Probably seen a lot, you've probably seen on the side of the road, you know, throughout the eastern shore over the past couple of years, as there's been a lot of this kind of work taking place. So they're. Big machines, they're incredibly precise, you can use a locator to identify exactly where it is under the ground as your stolen pipe. So we'll be utilizing that in the second, you know. You know, other side of the skill set is having a team that. You know, a knowledgeable IT team that is capable of sort of agglomerating all of the things that are necessary to. To go provide backend services for data transit for everybody. So, you know, one thing I kind of like to tell people is that. What we have now, the infrastructures that we have now were not actually made to provide the internet. So originally we had, you know, essentially a phone network in this area, you know, Verizon, but it's, you know, a. Twisted pair phone network that was deployed throughout the country. Decades later, you have COAX, which was meant to provide cable television, which is really just a one-way. Transit now in the nineties, you know, clever people found ways to. Use those old infrastructures to provide the internet and we've become so accustomed to it that. You know, we don't think anything of it, it's really only in the past 10 years or so that we've made a national. Movement to actually deploy fiber, which is. What the internet essentially needs to run, it's capable of. Providing bandwidth at orders of magnitude greater than. COAX and then of course, you know, I don't think anybody is just, you know, dial up anymore. So it's, it's a, it really is a. Point, a huge change in, and essentially fiber has always been delivering the internet. But it hasn't been delivering that last mile, so. Comcast or any, any other provider, they are using fiber to get from, you know. A to B, from maybe, but most likely to a place like Snow Hill, but maybe they have a regional center that's actually a little further away. But then because they already had this infrastructure built out, they just recycle the old infrastructure that they had to provide internet. So again, fiber is actually like what we need to deploy the internet nationwide. And the unlike COAX, which there are definitely improvements in the technology. There are still. Orders of magnitude improvements of what can be done over fiber cable as opposed to. COAX, so everybody's heard of Moore's Law where you can. The computer processors are increasingly able to be grown, there's similar. Improvements with fiber and we're sort of still right in the middle of it where we're actually to the average person. Being able to deliver much, much more bandwidth even a decade from now over the same cables that are being deployed now.
You'll have to let me know.
No, you're fine. So, you know. This goes a long way towards. You know, allowing small businesses and, and, you know, local homes and just about everybody to be able to access the internet, everything from. You know, working from home or having to do, you know. School from home on telework days and tele schooling and all that stuff. It's, we utilize symmetrical bandwidth, so things like Zoom calls and all those things can be provided much more efficiently. So we're going to be like, like you had alluded to as well, we have done a lot of preliminary work, surveying and some initial due diligence. We're going to be breaking ground in the next week or two. On a, again, a fairly limited basis, we need to make some connections here in town in order to get to our hub, which is going to be at the water tower. So we have some work to do to get there and then we're going to have a couple of months worth of setup. And a lot of the work actually takes place outside of the city in order to. Be able to deploy our resources here. So we hope in, you know, the next four or five months, we'll be able to offer service in the downtown area for businesses. Which is our initial focus and then it'll probably take about 12 to 18 months before we can start deploying service on a, you know, residentially. More broadly throughout town, some people may be able to sign up sooner than others, but generally speaking, you know, I'd rather pay, you know. Commit it's going to take a while to be able to offer that residential service, you know, broadly speaking, so. I guess, you know, sure people have questions, so I want to.
Council, do you have any questions?
I do. So Talkie has installed fiber optic cables out on Boston Road, Lamerson Road, really rural areas where. Maybe five or six houses are and they actually bought the liquor dispensary building. To expand their operation through this part of the county, now it sounds like you're a ways away from providing residential service. But they don't seem to be because they're already providing. Why should we go with your company?
Well, we're not going to be providing service in the same areas, so. They're, they've been funded in like these very rural areas and we're going to be largely within the town limits. They do have. They, they do have fiber, as you say, they're going to be coming through town, actually we are, I'm working, we know them quite well. And part of this build, I'm going to be putting in conduit that will assist them, so they actually have equipment at one of our. Data centers in Saltberry and likewise, so you know, the internet is ginormous web of interconnections. So the more people that we can interconnect with, like the stronger, the more reliable it is should, you know, break. So no, I mean. Hopefully someday you have a choice of both everywhere, but for the time being, you know, it's an immense amount of work, I know they have. Many, many years left to go to again, be able to say that they're offering service to everyone against rural areas nearby. But yeah, I mean, this, you know. Really, as I said, it's, we're rolling out fiber on like a national level. It's a multi-decade infrastructure projects. So it's, you know, I, I think it's exciting now that eastern shore has so many different providers and, you know, I think we're stronger by working together.
How long has your company been business?
Five years.
And you're based solely in Saltberry or have you ever had any subsidiaries in the other like states?
Not those states, but we have service in Saltberry, Princess Anne, Potomac and Denver. And then, so we're going to be pulling out service here as well.
You said that Talkie was funded for mostly rural areas. Is that like grant funding for them that they're receiving to go into those rural areas or is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So this is just for. Downtown businesses.
And like within the town limits, we'll be rolling out residential service.
Within the town, so resident, okay, residential of the whole.
Yep, it's just again, like it's, it's challenging and we want to, we want to offer service, you know, as quickly as possible, so by. In. In sort of dealing with the county at large and discussing, you know, their needs, I think there's sort of understanding that. A lot of money had come from the federal level. For rural areas and, and you know, it was very necessary, but at the same time, you know how. Internet, like the internet quality in the middle of nowhere is now like vastly superior. Than your average business can get in. You know, that, that is in some of these areas, so I think they're. Kind of working with us to try to like, oh, you know, catch up in that sense and make sure that everyone's got the same quality of service.
So are you digging up yards or what are you, how are you doing this and how will the. The residents be notified that you're, you're doing this?
Um, yeah, so. Not, um, there's some digging to be sure, um, the. Directional drills that we have. Minimize that immensely, so you know, we can set up on one end and, and go an entire city block. Without having to surface and it's incredibly precise. With that said, we do need to like dig down and test pit to verify the presence of utilities if we can't determine them through other means. So that's not unusual, but with that said, like. Again, this has been hap, this is happening all over the place and, and there are, you know, methods for us, you know, we're digging, we could take a small hole, test pit. But a big back seed and straw as we go. You know, we're not, we're not going to be digging up people's yards, I mean, fortunately, Snow Hill has pretty good. Setup as far as when I'm surveying an area, if you've got grass, then sidewalk. It's nice, I mean, it's a more clear delineation, that's not everywhere, but. So you know, i- if your house extends all the way, if your grass extends all the way to the curb, then yes, you may, you may see up there and think that we're. Our book will be saying probably front way.
What street are you currently going to be transiting?
Sir, hold it please for right now, okay?
I see that you said it takes one to two days before. Working in front of somebody's house, but. Here for the notification, how. What is the timeframe to notify? Residents before you go in the area to work?
I mean. I'm like, we're open to your suggestions, I mean. Typically, again, we're in the public right of way, so. You know, people don't typically get a knock on their door if there's street work taking place, like most of our work is in the street. So. You know, we're, we're here to have this meeting to kind of like create awareness. And. If, if you want us to essentially provide like.
But this is saying, how do you know if you're working near me and it's saying door hangers and letters, but what would be the. Time is, is there a time frame?
Sure, in the, in the weeks prior to that, you know, people are going to be notified. You know, that we are, that work is commencing. I don't have like. That, that's just part of like general marketing, you know, we want people to know that we're, we're coming.
Yeah, so for basic residential service, I notice that your rates are $10 higher than Talkies. Is that because of the trouble of getting through like our infrastructure or, or what do you chalk that up to?
Um, yeah, generally. Where we're working is considerably more difficult. I mean, on a sort of. You know, it comes down to on our side is like a cost per foot and in the rural areas, you can, there's very. Very, very great distances very quickly, you know, we have to be a little bit slower and go on a thoughtful.
Yeah, town's been here for a long time, that knows it very well there.
Any other questions, council?
No, I've heard this presentation on a couple of occasions recently at county council, so. Pretty good, thank you.
And sir, did you have a question?
What street are you currently going to be transiting?
Um, but ultimately, we're going to be allowing service to.
What's calendar year?
Just the downtown areas in this calendar year.
What streets?
So coming down Broad Street. So coming down Broad Street, I can propose. Um, so, sorry, coming out, we're um, you know, Washington Street. Um, Federal Street, Franklin Street, and the down, all all of the downtown city blocks, essentially, we will be offering service in the near future.
Councilperson Watkins, you have another?
Yeah, so are you running a fiber optic cable from Salisbury down twelve to us, or are you using somebody else's line from the downtown area house?
Um, for the back hall, we have a a ring that circles the shore and we do utilize around the wall base. Uh, for that, as does Talky and Chop Tank and all the other devices here.
Okay.
So they're the um, they're they're the middle mile essentially, uh, and then they're. Their sort of mission is to be able to extend the ability to um other smaller ISPs to be able to offer service to the last mile.
Any other questions? Okay, Mark, thank you very much, appreciate all you have.
Thank you.
All right, number five, group minutes. Uh, please take a look at your minutes of July first, that was a work session, July eighth, a regular meeting. Special meeting and closed session, and July twenty ninth, special meeting and closed session. Are there any additions or corrections?
I have a question. The um. July eighth minutes will happen on page seven. Four. Four inch.
Four, that.
I I I'm not, I I. Statements of Litten was not, let, let me know what it was really about. I remember some of the discussion. But I'm not certain, I think, but I'd see this kind of a push down a little and. Re-rerun it, because I don't, I think that's.
I I remember we had a a report uh for the fire department, and I directed uh Mr. Pollitt to answer any questions. Um, council member Lee stated will forward, do you remember what that, what that was?
Since um Chief Quillen wasn't here, and um. You asked anybody who had questions for the part, fire department and Chief Quillen to get them to Rick, and Rick would forward and communicate that. And you said, Mr. Lee, I believe that you were gonna forward questions for Chief Quillen.
I would like to flush it out, I, because I don't remember, I mean, it's not enough information there for me to come back to, and I was, so I was trying to figure out, okay, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Then.
You didn't have a question at the meeting, but.
But he's, but evidently you said you would forward some questions if you have.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't remember that you actually had any, but you just said the acknowledgement of what the mayor suggested, but if you had anything to share.
It was something, it was something, the discussion, and to me, if I remember, I think that discussion was around. The luncheon that we had attended, and I wanted to get to the what the the discussion, particularly as it related. Uh, to what they were doing, and I'm just not sure what.
Yeah.
Because I, for me to say that, I was following up on something, and that's what it was, and I'm not certain what it was, but it's only a discussion.
We'll go back and look at the.
Yeah, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to accept July first, July eighth, July tenth, and July twenty ninth minutes?
Forward, on the July eighth, that cannot be accepted, I'm I'm until they come back, so let's. You sent out a memorandum, it was prob- certainly proper to, that if there's a change in the minutes, those minutes can't be. Approved until the corrections are finished.
So if you had a question, I'm just trying to understand you. Um, if you have a question, you want it in the minutes, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, yeah, not only the. I'll say yes to to move forward, I'll say yes, we can move forward, yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna come back to July eighth. And we're going to look at July first, July tenth, and July twenty ninth. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Make a motion to itself, July first, July tenth, and July twenty eighth.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved of July first, July tenth, and July twenty ninth. Number six, treasurer's report, okay, in your packet, we have a treasurer's report. And um, Frederick, do you have anything to report today?
I, I don't. I'll read the um, the June balance was four million twenty-four thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars seventy-one cents. July's balance is. Three million three hundred thousand, three hundred thirty-five thousand sixty dollars forty-seven cents. And I would like for you to speak on the septic part of our report.
On the miscellaneous revenue on the front page, there is a collection of five hundred dollars, and that was a payment plan on the last. Due of the septic at this particular time, so there is no more other than outstanding accounts from prior years. Septage being collected or being processed.
And this is under utility administrative receivables, and that's the third item.
It is.
Anything else?
No.
Um, yes, anybody, council, got any questions? Councilperson Watkins? All right, do I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor, if you second, um, councilperson Lee, uh seconded, do um, I have. At this time, a a mo- you did in the motion, we've got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, the treasurer's report is accepted and passed. Number seven, town manager's report.
I do have one uh update to give to you tonight, since this was written, uh later on in the agenda tonight. You'll have the, excuse me, the first step of the town's acceptance of a property donation from the Worcester County Commissioners to uh round off the Bank Street project. Um, last night, the county applied to the planning commission for approval for a subdivision of those properties to remove them from uh. The the county existing land and add it to eventually the town's property, or Bank Street, and um. Planning commission voted unanimously to accept the subdivision plan as presented, and so tonight that means we can go forward uh with the process of exempting that property. Will eventually lead to the uh, the rounding off of the whole Bank Street perimeter.
Great.
And I would like to add one thing, because this has been on the table for so long now, and you know, you all know that we've had issues with our wastewater treatment plant going back several years. We've had all kinds of dramas, we've had public meetings, we've had um. Painful meetings with the Department of the Environment about how we could do our part to make sure that the wastewater treatment plant was operating as it as it should be, as it was licensed and permitted to be. Because we did have some violations of our permit, uh, we were facing pretty substantial penalties and fines for the Department of the Environment. And without exception, everyone we spoke to, whether they were the engineers, whether they were other municipalities, whether they were state officials. They all said that no matter what you do to fix your problem, you're gonna be fined by the state, there will be fines coming. Uh, I can remember George Smith from uh Susquehanna standing up at the old firehouse telling us, uh, and he came in and and basically. Prepared a way for Bobby Wilk to come on board and actually turn it around, and George made incredible progress at the wastewater treatment plant, and he said, you will be fine, there's no doubt about it. Well, we are on the verge of approving a consent order planned with the State Department of the Environment. And if we do our part in living up to that part of the state order, they will hold in advance any fines or penalties, financial penalties against the town. Now, that's almost unheard, uh, our experience has been, uh, most recently, the town's Elmar. Had serious issues with their wastewater plant, went five years into fully correct and clean. Efficient operation of the plant, and we're still hit by the Department of the Environment for uh with heavy penalties for previous violations. The contract we're about to sign with the state, as long as we do our part, if we have every confidence we can, there will be no penalties assigned to Snow Hill, and I think that's just worthy of sharing good news.
I have to tell you, it's it's, it's for Bobby Wilk and the team that it worked to turn that plan around, we're all, we also be very grateful for that.
Bobby, Bobby has been amazing for our town and what he's done, we just want to thank you, um. You have done an amazing job, yes.
Oh, you can give us a, with all the kinds, summary of what else from boys yesterday, like we, it would be. Oh, this is something, yeah, I mean, anything you. If you can, now, we can talk.
Well, that was the only real agenda item, um, our new uh co- or planning zoning and building official, Mr. Brandley, who's here tonight, gave his. Progress report on activities he's been involved with since he came on board, um. The only other thing on the agenda was to elect officers, we delayed that till we get a full board on inflation, that was the only business on the agenda.
Any other questions for Mr. Pollitt? From council?
Um, yeah, I have one, uh, you spoke with Title Health, uh, then updating their, they're booked near in Snow Hill, and they wanted us to provide the infrastructure. Water and, is that right?
Well, we've had some preliminary discussions about, you know, level of interest and what would be needed from the fa- from the town and how the, what a partnership would look like, something like that. Clearly, infrastructure, not only for that project, but for other sort of events, suggested uh is a critical starting point, and so we are trying to follow up with that to get some. Understanding of what it's gonna take to vendor order super services other places around town, that's the one of it.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on to number eight, department reports. Um, anything with um economic development, Mr. Pollitt, that you wanna talk about at this time, or?
I have anything to.
Okay. Um, code enforcement, um, Mr. Brandley, um, if you haven't met him, um. At this point, he is our planning, zoning, and building official and code enforcement, and we welcome him, uh, we're glad you're here, uh. Do you have anything to add to your report that you have in the packet?
Um, it basically reflects the very first week I was here, so it is somewhat light in terms of both code enforcement and some of the permits that we're working on, but. Uh, beyond that, uh, I did wanna update uh council on a rental registration program. This came in today from First State Inspection Agency, uh, out of one hundred and eighty-eight total rental units that have been registered and sent to them for inspection. About half of those total have been inspected, seventy-one units have had successful passing inspections, approximately thirty-seven percent. Uh, thirty-two units have received failing inspections, and they're awaiting a scheduled reinspection, that's about seventeen percent. Twenty-four units remain unscheduled, uh, sixty-one units currently have upcoming upcoming inspection schedule, so they're working through that, uh. We're very pleased with their response and their effort, so beyond that, that's the u- update there. Um, I did have an opportunity to walk uh the vacant non-residential property, uh, properties that we had a list started on. Uh, councilperson Watkins was very gracious enough to lead me around downtown and give me some background and history on some of the properties, I appreciate that very much. Uh, so I'm still evaluating essentially those properties as to why they were added to the list and the criteria that potentially was weighed against them. And I'm going to do any follow-up as far as uh, if they want to appeal uh to the housing board review and let them have that opportunity. Uh, to appeal any uh notice for themselves, or that's that.
Okay, any questions?
I have, so you you were the planning and zoning official in Poughkeepsie before you came here. Did you have any dealings with Simple Fiber when you were down there in Poughkeepsie?
Yeah, Simple Fiber was very responsive, they submitted detailed plans prior to their phasing of their improvements. Uh, majority of, I think, the installations were in the sidewalk, and we were very pleased with their words. I don't know what uh, what the sign-up rate is now, but uh. But various successful projects were Poughkeepsie, I think City Hall's now considering tapping into it, whatever.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Public Works, Sir Barfield?
Oh, I have one thing to add, I mean, I think with the public going, uh, the public works is hard, I know the new guy. Dante Hudson, they're working on coming to county, uh, to replace the John that left most so ago.
Okay.
You know, so far he likes it and is pleasure with it.
Good, it's good to hear, great. Any questions for Mr. Barfield? All right, D, water and wastewater for you, Mr. World?
Um, besides all the things that broke, we got fixed over the month, uh, one of the big things, uh, Washington Street well will hopefully be online by then.
Ah, that is good to hear.
Um, contractor finished all the repair work up there, we sent off uh bacterial ecological samples today. Yeah, we're the electrical contractor will be in there Thursday to finish up the final touches, and we should be starting up.
Yeah, thank you, great, great news. Council? Okay, grants office, um, Mr. Sir?
Uh, as per usual, I I my report's pretty comprehensive, I can answer any specific questions, I think the status of the. You know, the open grants, um, some of them have changed, some of them have, are remaining static because they're sort of in a, they're in, they are in a period of stasis. Uh, because we're waiting on different things from engineering or uh, you know, other type of thing, it was a busy month, though, we we got. Uh, four grants were approved, uh, two for the police department, which is great, uh, and um, and we were submitted two more um. Reports and uh, and really the biggest thing we're waiting for now is the biggest pending grant is the search park bathrooms with D N R. To uh, and that hopefully will be on the Maryland Board of Public Works meeting the twenty-seventh of this month.
So you said that the state passed that?
Well, as of right now, the last, the last step in getting an approval on this is to make it through the Board of Public Works.
Okay.
Which, or everything I'm told is typically. Something that usually happens, like it makes it that far.
Makes it that far, because it's the last step.
Yes, it's the last step.
Do you know what we'll hear from that?
Well, it's, like I said, it's, the meeting is August twenty-seventh, the agenda is not out, and I check, I check that website all the time to see if we're showing up on there.
Okay.
Um, a- as soon as it shows up, I'll be at your door in the, in town, I'll let you know, so, because I want this to happen, so.
Okay.
Um, but I I think that's the biggest thing right now, um, and then uh we are in the final stages of. Uh, creating the R F P to uh um put out for um. Consultants for the comprehensive plan and uh, Rick and myself and Mr. Brandley, we're all working on that, and I'm hoping that that'll be the next planning commission meeting. That has to go out, we've gotta get that out.
Yes.
The, the, the clock is ticking.
And you got Sultan, okay. All right. Any questions?
Questions from anybody?
When is that grant due?
Which grant? Well, it, we, we already have it. We're just, we're, right now is the, the grant needs to be spent, spent by next, the end of next June.
Let's go ahead.
Well, the RFP, you go ahead. You all putting it together now?
If I can answer that?
Yes, please.
We actually have it ready to go. We were delayed. Uh, we didn't realize there was a change in personnel at the State Planning Office in Salisbury. We just got word today that, uh, Keith Lackey, who'd been our contact for so many years, has retired and stated to sign a new person. Uh, fortunately though, with Dan coming on board, he actually had authored the same RFP for Poughkeepsie. He's looked over hours and it's ready to go. So we're, we're prepared to get that out right away. We, we, you know, you, you recall the last time we talked about it, you were trying to get the final state blessing to make sure we've clicked all the boxes with the state requirements for the RFP. Uh, Dan has been through this. He actually started the process at Poughkeepsie before they decided to go ahead with a consultant of their own. So we're prepared now. Just, it's just a matter of now to scheduling the, the period when we want, when we want to receive the proposals and get it out. In the mail and post it on all the appropriate websites for, uh, responses. So it's, it's, it's basically ready to go now.
So when you want to push, what?
Well, as soon as we get to it, uh, you know, it's. The clock is not our friend these days. But no, it, it, it should definitely go out this week, depending on that.
Any other questions? Okay, Doria A, Purnell Museum, Mr. Pollak?
I did put this in my town management report, but, uh, we're very excited to announce that we've hired, uh, a new director for the museum. She'll be starting on Wednesday, April, uh, April, August twentieth, start today, August twentieth. And, uh, the president of the, President Julie A. Purnell Museum is here, uh, Ms. Margie Levesque, and she, we've worked closely with Margie and her board. Um, this is a mayoral appointment, uh, uh, Mayor Simpson appointed, uh, Tina Busco to be the new director. And her nomination was approved by the town council. She'll start on the twentieth. Uh, Taron Lewis, who is, uh, not here, uh, works for the town. He is also going to pull double duty as the assistant director. Uh, we feel it's important to have a connection between town hall and the museum, thanks being the way they are. Uh, town, uh, Taron's financial expertise and, uh, responsibilities with the town will help us with a certain level of oversight with, uh, the financial end of the, of the museum. Uh, Ms. Busco comes very highly qualified. She's, uh, currently the director and will stay at the Ratcliffe House, which is right before you go over in the round side of Ascadian Island. And, uh, she knows grant writing, she knows, uh, tourism, she knows historic preservation, all of this. She clicks all the boxes. She's a terrific acquisition. We're so excited to have her. And so look very soon to see, uh, the museum up, open, running and full of activity for the community.
Grant, okay, awesome, yes. Okay, um, Police Department Chief, have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add? You sure?
Good plus another combine, so we had a really good turnout.
Do you know how many?
Roughly five thousand.
Okay.
A good turnout.
It was wonderful. Beautiful, national night out also. Thank you for that. It was great, and all your advisory. Any questions from the chief? Okay, well, thank you. Fire departments, Mr. Pollak, you can any word, Chief Quillen? Okay, so we have a new chief. If you hadn't heard, um, Andrew Quillen, um, local guy. Um, we're really proud to have him. I, I was, um, in the school system when he went through. And he is a wonderful, wonderful person, and we're, we're very lucky to have him. Um, any questions on the card?
I don't have any questions. I, 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 I'd look forward to following up to him, and I think that was kind of what I think something, you know.
Is that pinned out over in the minutes?
Yeah, and talk to him coming back because he's done an excellent job. He and two of his. Top-ranked officers or the leadership came through a cadet program. And I remember that cadet program many years ago when they started. Here, it, it is just an amazing how they do that in home, but that programs are getting, uh, great, young people. Into it out of high school, out of the community, and then comes where, where they are. And we have to talk about, interesting part, when we had that meeting with them, we talked to them about the power program. And what we were contemplating here, how to merge those together and take the learning out of, uh, their program and use some of it. So it was, it was really, uh, I just see a, a, a possibly great relationship developing. With that cadet program and supporting young communities, uh, in, uh, in our town. Because we really, like I said, before, since, since the Eagles mess, we have not had a communal program in this town. We don't have one now. And, uh, I just saw the great possibility of that coming together and want to talk about it.
Um, so high school, we do not have a representative now because they're, they're all for the summer. But, um, in September, we'll hope to have a representative again. Um, and Mary Ann Rutzler, who was our, our past council, from Stonehill High School, just, uh, went to college this week. So we're slightly further. Okay, that's all the department reports. Any questions or anything else? Okay, need to, uh, move on to unfinished business. And we have ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash fifteen. Um, this is county fees, fines and other charges, uh, water charges. Title wastewater rates of the code for the town of Snow Hill. Anything to add?
Um, Attorney Howard.
So this is your current water and sewer hookup rates for single-family dwellings hasn't been updated over twenty years. So page two, you have an increase to your water hookup fee. And on the bottom of page two and three, you have an increase to the sewer hookup fee for single-family dwellings.
Okay, this is the second reader that passed first reading. And we'll on to the second. Okay, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifteen?
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifteen.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, so the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifteen has passed. All right, new business. Um, at this time, I would, we have a little presentation. Um, from Diana Malti, representing Main Street designation and Main Street.
Lots of a presentation, uh, opportunity.
Opportunity, yeah.
Um, but we have a couple of photos that you've already seen for, uh, part of rendering of, uh, what we envision for the final results of the Bank Street project. Um, just to give you a little sense of our investment in this particular project. Um, the mayor and council in two thousand twenty-two, uh, passed the design team of downtown Snow Hill, yank. At which point I was the chair, co-chair of that team, was doing a design of the, of Bank Street from Green Street to Willow Street. So just the first block. Uh, we presented that to the mayor and council in September of two thousand twenty-two. I looked it up yesterday. I was wanting. See how long I've been working on this. And, um, they were, they liked it enough where they asked us to go back into a design all the way to the river. To join the commercial area with the river, um, with a, what the, uh, state now calls a level place. Uh, part of placemaking, which is a tenant of, of Main Street and most community development areas. Um, so what you're looking at tonight is an offer from the Worcester County Commissioners. To deed the property they own on the second block of Bank Street from Willow down to the river to the town. To help simplify this project, so we only have one property owner to deal with, not two. Uh, we literally have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of volunteer hours put into this. In Beth and Molder and other people who are sitting here nodding their heads and very can raise their hands. Jan and I were the co-chairs who want to start, uh, uh, to work on this. But the plan is to have something that's a community gathering place that can be used by all, that's beautiful. That makes us proud of this part of our town and that we can then replicate throughout city. So that we, uh, we love our town, which we do. We want to love it more. So if you have any questions about this project or what the advantage is of having only one property owner. The commissioners, we were all at that meeting when the commissioners, uh, voted, voted to approve this, and I was unanimous. So we want to not, uh, disappoint them.
Right.
Keep going on till it is, till it's a done deal. So this is a shared street. Uh, if you're familiar with shared streets, it's curbless. So it's ADA friendly, unlike my store, which has a curve in front of it, a six-foot sidewalk, so it's not accessible by motorized wheelchairs. Um, this will be, and, uh, the ballards are removable so that, uh, cars can come through or we can close it off for festivals. That's the very, very short version. But when you picture this now, the money we're working on now, because all of this right now is grant funded. Uh, picture it without all those power lines. So that's the money we're working on now. And isn't that a beautiful picture? That with no lines, without power. So, um, it's gonna be amazing. So there are a lot of people in this room who should probably all stand up with their.
No, no.
Yeah. Go ahead and stand. Everybody who's worked on it.
Any questions?
I'm going on all day about this, this is important, so.
So there, the property that the county is giving us is part of any kind of this library.
Just in, yeah.
But you want to stand up there.
What am I?
That area by the curb bench is, that's just.
And both sides, yeah. There's a little bit on this side, too.
Yes, it's the back part of the library parking lot and then right across the street.
And that visual helps us so we know what, what land is going, going to us.
Can you picture it without the power?
Without the power.
With the black man, those two people decided to carry the black one and those over through three in Washington. I, I think they already have those, I think.
So this is a grassroots project. I mean, it came from the Skinnasons and, and the design committee and, and just exploded. You know, and it's been years and hours, so. Counsel, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, now, um, we're entering into new business. And there are, uh, some ordinances and one resolution, which is Main Street resolution. Um, so let's start with A ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. Um, this is like portable housing, uh, that is, has been passed by the state, but anything, um. Attorney Howard, would you like to add to this?
So you, you have this at, uh, multiple meetings, so I know you guys are very familiar with it. Uh, the state has law that we must permit certain new manufactured homes and modular homes in zones that allow single-family residential uses. This is the first reader. Your first page is all updated definitions. The page four is sort of what I would call the meat of it, where we say new manufactured homes may be allowed in your residential districts if it's outside the historic district. And if it is or will after purchase be converted to real property in accordance with the real property article of the state, is on an approved permanent closed foundation. Um, additionally, that exterior material may be substantially similar to other homes in the area, has to have all proper sewer or permits, has to be connected to water and sewer. So, and same similar language for a new modular dwelling. And then, as we discussed before, and sort of highlighted, they had a very outdated, um, fine amount of twenty-five dollars if this section is violated, and that was updated to the five hundred.
Questions from council? All right, do I have a motion to pass on the first reading? That doesn't mean it's passed. We have to go to second reading, but on the first reading, um, twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion for the ordinance twenty five thirteen.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen has passed on the first reader. All right, let's take a look at B, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. And this is the ordinance, um, on zoning section entitled residential use category, um. Permit, permitted uses tables of the code of Snow Hill, town of Snow Hill. Uh, this is on the first reader. And set date for public hearing. So can you explain all of that?
So this is basically your companion ordinance to the one we just discussed. You've got to update your table of permitted uses to reflect that manufactured homes and modular homes can be used as committed uses in those R1 zones. So you'll see on page four, I just sort of highlighted where it's been at.
Page four.
So you can see it easily. And then because it affects your zoning code, you have to have a public hearing. So we just had that at the, um, prior to the second reader.
Okay. Any questions, council? All right, do I have a motion to accept twenty twenty-five dash fourteen?
I make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Excuse me, we do, the motions would also include the date for the public hearing, which we suggest would be at our next regular meeting on September ninth.
September ninth?
It would be on that agenda for second reading, but we would hold a public hearing first.
Before the second.
I would suggest seven thirty, seven thirty PM on September ninth. We can always start public hearing after the closing time. We can't start it before.
September ninth at seven thirty?
I suggest that, yes.
That's what you're suggesting. Okay, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen is approved with a public hearing on September ninth at seven thirty. Okay, let's go to C. Um, this is twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, ordinance to accept the transfer of real property from Mr. County. For the Bank Street Promenade project, and that's what we just went over. This is for the first reader.
Yep, it's what Ms. Malti just described. Um, kind of measures on property adjacent to Fang Street on either side of the road, down towards the river. And, uh, we're all aware, the town of, or the county agreement donated to the town, um, at no cost. And mostly ordinance is the legal sort of a description of those properties. And that's important, at no cost. Yes.
Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2025 dash 16?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2025 dash 16.
Do I have a second?
I'm ready to.
I'm sorry?
I'm ready to, I'm sorry, I'm going to get your second first.
Second?
No, I said that, get your, get your second first.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'm second.
All in favor, say aye.
Means aye.
Do you have not, are you and I, what are you?
I think Mr. Lee was trying to have some discussion.
Oh, discussion, oh, okay, go ahead, we had the second discussion.
I think he looks at it and I'm on the right. I want to, I spoke to several of you in the audience regarding this this matter. I have supported and will continue to support, I will support this ordinance, this. But I'm concerned about the disconnect. And I think that it does not do me any good or the community when if there's a notion, and let me speak about Eddie Lee, is opposed to what that lady right there in the dorm over many years now, supported her and this project from the very beginning. What you need to know is that for many, many years, about 35 years now, for those of you who have not been through at all with us on this, we've been talking about the development of West Market Street. And we've been talking about how we need to develop not just downtown, but the entire community. That's the disconnect. That's the disconnect in the community. And many people choose to, I don't know, take, I'm going to speak to me, my aggressiveness to keep that a part of the conversation in the growth of Snow Hill. That's, that's how simple it is. And the frustration on my heart is over this period of time. Ladies and gentlemen, we do not have one other than this in the total community, particularly as it relates to the African-American community and the minority community here. Not one project, not one. As my memory comes back to me and I thought about this, the only project that I've seen in this period of time that is now no longer there was the Eaglesness. And then I, I just want to bring this to the community because you guys are making things happen, you're all doing things. And, and, but I want you to know that there's a large segment of this community feels shut out. A large segment of this community feels shut out. And then I'm going to leave it there because to bring anything else on this, I don't want to distort it. And I'm looking at the person who I had that conversation and I said I was going to mention tonight, but I'm not going to mention it. But there are some serious issues that we have to have regarding the growth of this project and going forward. And then I'm asking, as I've done in the past, I want to be a part of that discussion. I, I don't want this group as such, and now I'm talking about the, the Bank Street project. You will meet by yourselves. I've come in and tried to be a part of the meetings and the meeting. Well, hopefully now that we've had a change of personnel, we're going to see a change of attitudes and direction. So that's where I'm going to leave it. But I'll be pleased, Mayor, when it comes time, Mayor, to make the nomination, this nomination forward, or it's already been forward.
Okay, it's been seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance 2025 dash 16 is passed. D, resolution number 2025 dash 03, Main Street Resolution.
The resolution supporting application for Main Street Maryland program designation. Whereas the mayor council Snow Hill, Maryland Music Corporation is made by application or request for the Main Street Maryland designation by the Department of Housing and Community Development, state of Maryland, and supports the local administration of the Main Street Maryland program in Snow Hill. Whereas the mayor and council Snow Hill recognizes that there's a significant need to continue reinvestment and revitalization of this community and town as well. Whereas the mayor and council Snow Hill has made a commitment to improve the economy appearance image of its additional downtown business district. Whereas a local organization, the Downtown Snow Hill Inc., has been informed to administer and implement a comprehensive revitalization strategy based on department's Main Street Maryland program, which utilizes the Main Street core point approach to strengthen the economic potential of historic downtown and neighborhood business district. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council Snow Hill would hereby endorse and supports the application for the Main Street Maryland designation in Downtown Snow Hill Inc., administering the local program for Snow Hill. See it further resolved by the mayor, is authorized to execute any documents and take any necessary action to carry out the intent of the resolution. And then we'll also send a copy of this to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay, so this resolution doesn't need a second reading. So this is the resolution for Main Street. Are there any questions, council? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept resolution number 2025 dash 3?
Absolutely.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 2025 dash 3 on Main Street is passed. All right, E. Ordinance 2025 dash 17. Ordinance to amend chapter 131, penalty suicide and other charges, entitled docking fees of the code of the town of Snow Hill.
We've had these, also a couple of things, we know you guys are very familiar with it. So the first one, 17, relates to updating the fee structure on.
Everybody see that in your packets? Yes, we have gone over the docking fees at several different meetings. This is for the first reader. Any questions? If not, do I have a motion to accept ordinance 2025 dash 17? Do I have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that ordinance has passed on the first reader. And finally, we have ordinance 2025 dash 18. And this is to amend chapter 162, entitled Streets and Sidewalks of the code of the town of Snow Hill.
Yes, again, as discussed before, this was updating your docking regulations for the town.
I have questions.
Okay, question?
My question is with number 11, read. Overnight parking is prohibited unless in the parking space. Allowed such parking, is that just for just the vehicles that accompany a dock?
There was some concern that people just park in the parks, and there's been some incidences before. I'm not necessarily familiar with what the issue were, but there was some concern about people, vehicles there and not being in actual parking spaces.
All right.
Okay. Do we have a question? Okay, I need a motion to pass ordinance number 25-18. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance 2025 dash 18 is passed on the first reading. All right, comments, no comments? S3 maybe?
I don't think I need to.
Would you like to? Yeah.
No, I'm okay.
Okay. Diana Nolte, you've always, you want to go get up again? Sure, 112 West Marine.
I just wanted to clarify personally that the Maryland Main Street program and DHTB requires that the Main Street district be continuous and cover the historic commercial district of downtown. We're not allowed to include East Market Street or West Market Street. We worked that issue with them multiple times. It doesn't mean we don't worry about the whole town, we do. And we're always working to try and beautify. And we're in support of projects for the town. So, and I can bring references if you want and testimonials. But we are mandated to only look at the area downtown. And so we don't really have a choice on that. What we have done is try to partner with other community organizations. Really the Chamber of Commerce, which includes the whole town and Snow Hill Rotary. So we're constantly doing projects like cleanups and beautification and helping to write support letters for trails and/or the African-American Heritage Society and others. But these things have got to be included in our plan. So let's get a plan that pulls it all together and makes the whole town beautiful, makes the whole town functional, makes the whole town a better place for our children and our grandchildren. And we will be a part of it, we will take on that if we can.
Thank you. Open Shields. You still was the speaker.
I just want to thank all of you sitting here for being here and serving our town. The ordinance and the resolution that you accepted today, that's a lot to our Main Street organization. And Ms. Lee, I also, I want to level, repeat what Diana Nolte said. I honestly wish we could, but the organization that we are, we have, we, we have to focus on downtown. It's the, basically the limit of our reach. And I, when I can, I will be available to help, but just know that intent and the willingness is there. And the willingness to include everyone. The Bank Street project will be a gathering place for everybody and anybody in town. And I am very excited that it's moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, comments from council? Do you like to start here? Ms. Lee, you can start.
I want to thank the business community for their support for the National Night Out, for the fundraising efforts. While there are some challenges right now to get the project clearly defined going forward, we certainly appreciate the support that was given. I think we have raised over $5,000 to try to jumpstart the power project, working with the chief. And hopefully that we're going to be able to move forward with that. It's been a busy, busy last two weeks. I left looking forward and I sent it to some of you on there who would like to take it. And I appreciate all the work that those who supported outside of the business community, the National Night Out, thank you so much.
Councilperson Longgan, is there anything you'd like to?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody who came out tonight. Thank Sean, and Chris for coming out here and supporting our issues. I really, I love the engagement. Also, thank you to Diana Nolte for helping organize the blessing of the combines. That was a tremendous event. And the Payne family as well. Randy Barfield, thank you for being out there too, in the chat. That's all, yeah.
Okay. Councilperson Fletcher?
I want to say, the Blessings of the Combine was a real success. 25 year anniversary, there's a lot of people, food ran out so quickly. You all who organized. Also, the, the county fair. So it was turnout, the weather was nice. And always thank you to the town staff for working so hard. And it's always great to see when constituents are emailing with some concerns. It's great to see that. I have asked for it before. I've, I've really have started seeing people email me more than before. I really appreciate it and we'll try to support you as much as possible. Thank you all.
I would like to thank all of you for coming. This is what it's all about in our town. And when people care enough to attend meetings in person, I know we have Zoom and I know we have live streaming, but your voices are very important to us. And we, I just want to say, please continue it. Send us how you feel. Get, get involved. And I know that Main Street downtown has been just an amazing force. You are. And you are trying to do the best for this town. And I just want to commend you. A lot of you helped with Blessings of the Combines along with staff, Public Works, Police Department. You guys worked so hard and put in so many hours and it was a hit. I mean, it was a beautiful day. Everybody was having fun, people weren't, weren't hot and grumpy. They were, I mean, people were nice to each other and, you know, saying good things. And it was so uplifting to hear all of that and everybody having, having such a good time. It's, it just promotes a vibrance for our town. And I've heard so many, so many people who have come up to me, even in town, people are saying that how charming this little town is. And the businesses are so, you know, they're just, they said they're not junk stores. They are real, you know, thriving businesses. And I, I, I just want to say when we all come together, it's the best. So thank you so much. Okay, ready guys? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.